Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting for February 25, 2019. I call this a regular meeting, it's also our voting meeting. And to get things rolling, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank is absent and Mr. President Johnson will cover that. Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We do have a quorum as we indicated. Mrs. Frank is attending to a child who is a little under the weather tonight, so that is a little more important than being here at a meeting. And Mrs. Jarvis, would you help us with the pledge tonight?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to our regular meeting for February 25, 2019. Those of you who are in the audience and would like to follow along with our agenda, you can step out of the door to the back left and on the table to your right, you will find both our agendas and our blue slips. Anyone who wants to address the board tonight, please fill out a blue slip and hand it to one of the board members. For those of you who are watching at home and want to follow along with our agenda, you can go to our website, which is lavoniapublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you will see the agenda and you can drop down and you can follow that. We do have a couple of fun items in our communications to start off, but one of the things that I always begin our meetings with, and that is to highlight what our district climate goal is. And I'll read that to you. "All students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another." The board takes that climate goal extremely seriously, and it is no better way to show our students the respect that is deserved than how our board interacts with one another. And when you read this, it's not just between students and students, it's students to adults, adults to adults, and adults to students. And we may have disagreements on the board. We don't always see eye to eye on matters, but we always respect each other's opinions. And you will never hear us degrading each other. We will give full and do consideration to each and every one of the ideas. And we will do that to anyone who comes before this board. We will show you respect. And in reply, we would also ask that you respect the board as well. That's the way we run our meetings. So we will begin tonight with our communications. And Mrs. Jenkins, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Oakwist. Tonight, we would like to take a few moments to recognize a special group of staff members here in LPS. Our dedicated principals continue to amaze us with their passion, their compassion, their creativity, and their obvious love for education and for our schools. Our principals take the lead, they set the tone for our students and staff, they provide guidance, leadership, and show their professionalism in all that they do each and every day. Our principals can be found walking our hallways, connecting with students, rallying our school spirit, cheering our teams, calming a nervous youngster, assuring a nervous parent, applauding a performance, or just offering a listening ear. Our principals take ownership in creating learning environments in which students feel safe, connected, challenged, and cared for in our schools. Each year, our district designates an official week to recognize their efforts. It's called Principals Week, which we are kicking off here tonight with a special resolution that will be read into the record and voted upon by the board. If I could ask Mr. Tom Trob to join me at the podium, please. Mr. Trob is the Assistant Principal at Johnson Upper Elementary, and he is the newest member of our Leeds Group, which is the Educational Administrators Group to which all of our principals belong. Let me grab the resolution here.
Mrs. Jenkins, we might as well go ahead and get the motion out first.
That would be great.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution establishing the week of February 25, 2019, as Principals Week in Lavonia Public Schools.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. And we're back to you, Mrs. Jenkins.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Lavonia Public Schools Board of Education, February 25, 2019, Principals Week Resolution. Whereas Principals Week is dedicated to recognizing the significant contributions of Lavonia Public Schools, school principals, and the commitment to providing quality educational experiences and guidance for their students; and whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential if schools, teachers, and support staff are to implement college and career-ready standards and assessments; and whereas school principals play a vital role in the success of students and act as the liaison between the school and the community it serves; and whereas we join with educators, parents, and students to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership, now therefore be it resolved, the trustees of the Lavonia Public Schools Board of Education recognize the week of February 25, 2019, as School Principals Week, and encourage all citizens to think and support the efforts of school principals in our community. Now present this to Tom Trob. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of my colleagues, I just want to say I'm very honored to receive this award on their behalf. We are more than thrilled to wake up every morning and serve this district, this community. Very few people can say they love what they do, and I can say myself and my colleagues, we love what we do. It's been a pleasure to serve the students, the community members, the parents, the teachers, board members, and cabinet as well. We thank you for everything that you do for us, and we're glad to get this recognition, but most importantly, we're happy to be part of Lavonia Public Schools.
Thank you.
If you're out and about in the schools this week of February 25, be sure to give your principal a high five, a handshake, a hug, whatever you feel comfortable doing, and thank them for everything that they do for our students and our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins.
I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Oakwist, who has a few words to say as well.
Thank you. Just on behalf of the Board of Education and our administrative team, Tom, thank you for being here this evening. Joe, we're thrilled to have you in the audience as well. And we're grateful for all of our Lavonia leaders who day in and day out dedicate a great deal of their time, their energy, and their care for the students and staff that they serve. So we're so fortunate to have each and every one of you, and we're very, very happy to recognize you this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Again, I'd like to just thank the folks who have served as principals and assistant principals in our district. My oldest is 29, almost 30, so I've been in Lavonia Public Schools for almost 25 years now. So obviously, I've had a number of school principals. Their role is so vital to setting the tone in the building, and it really is true that that tone trickles down right through the staff and the parents and so forth there. It is so vital, and I'd just like to thank so many folks who have served over many, many years in this capacity. Your unseen attributes really carry as much as the actual physical day-to-day duties, but it is so vital, and we just thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions? Comments? I think she said it all. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Brad-- sorry, Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you so much. I would note that we are going to take a short break after Item 3C to spend a little time with our honorees tonight, so just wanted to let everybody know. That will take us to Item 3B, Points of Pride, Tim Martin, Workforce Instructor of the Year. Mrs. Jenkins?
Hey, thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we are proud to recognize Mr. Tim Martin, who is the Construction Trades Teacher at the Lavonia Career Technical Center. He was recently named Michigan Workforce Instructor of the Year by the Michigan Home Builders Association. If I could ask him to join me at the podium, please? Make that long trek up here. We'd like to present you, Tim, with this Certificate of Recognition, which reads Lavonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Michigan Workforce Instructor of the Year, Michigan Home Builders Association, presented to Tim Martin, honored by the Board of Education for outstanding achievement, dated February 25, 2019, signed by Superintendent Oakwist and Board President Mark Johnson. There you are. Congratulations. Okay. This amazing honor is in recognition of Tim's dedication and his talents, not only in the skilled trades themselves, but also in the teaching of those skills to two groups of Lavonia High School, juniors and seniors, who are either in the Construction Trades I or Construction Trades II courses at the Career Center. Tim has been teaching in Lavonia Public Schools for 14 years. He has a teaching degree and a master's degree in career technical education. He comes from a family of builders and learned the ropes while working for his father's building company. I heard that you were as young as age 14 when you started.
Younger, but that's what I did say.
Mr. Martin's students graduate with the skills they need to pursue careers in any number of skilled trades, including carpentry, electrical, plumbing, masonry, and much more. His students begin the first Construction Trades course with a 10-hour OSHA safety program and continue with basic principles of construction, including blueprint reading, masonry, electrical, plumbing, carpentry, and even the use of heavy equipment. His Construction Trades II course offers students the opportunity to complete a 30-hour OSHA safety program and complete their Michigan Builders Pre-Licensing Course, which is great. The combination of both of those courses allows students to explore various skilled trades and identify career options after graduation. He teaches between 60 and 75 students per year. Personally, I've had the opportunity to watch Mr. Martin with his students during their home remodeling projects that happen in coordination with the city of Lavonia's Housing Department. Tim has an easy way with the students, and it's apparent that they are both comfortable with him and attentive to his instruction. You have quite a family with your kids, don't you? It seems like a very cohesive group. While they're working on fixing up a home, the students and Mr. Martin become a cohesive team, all working toward the goal of creating a functional and beautiful home. Mr. Martin also likes to be sure to add a garage to the project whenever he can so that the students have an opportunity to have that new construction experience as well. It's a unique program and an excellent opportunity for students. About 80% of Mr. Martin's students go into the trades after graduation, and some go on to earn bachelor's degrees in construction management. The program would not be what it is today without the dedicated leadership of Mr. Martin. I would now like to invite Career Center Principal Joe Anderson to say a few words about Mr. Martin. Hello, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, thanks a lot. Thank you for the opportunity, board members, cabinet members, superintendent. So obviously, we're very, very proud of Tim, and the program that he runs is one of our shining stars, and it is one of the programs that is 100% full every single year. This year, I think we did get everybody in, but it was tight. It was tight. He's got full classes because, number one, he does such a good job that word is out amongst the high schools that it's a great program. And also, right now, the skilled trades and the type of skills that Tim teaches are in very high demand, and students can go on to higher education or they can go right into the workforce. And one of the good problems that Tim has is that he gets multiple calls every week from all kinds of different employers in the skilled trades looking to hire his kids when they graduate because of the skills, and they're in such high demand. So it's a great program, always moving forward. He's always looking for new things to do with his kids. One of the things that was mentioned, the heavy equipment operator, he's got a-- how much did that cost?
A lot.
A lot. Yes, a lot. He has a simulator in the room now where the kids can actually simulate using back hose and the heavy equipment and the digging equipment and all those types of things. So he's always looking to enhance the program and to do new things along the way. So that's really nice. I also would like to mention Brian Lester, who's here. Brian is Tim's paraprofessional, and he has been his right-hand man for the past seven years. They work hand in hand every day. Brian does an awesome job as well with the students, and I'm sure that Tim would tell you that he couldn't be as successful as he is if he didn't have Brian working with him. So very proud of both of them, very, very happy to have them. I know how lucky I am to have someone like Tim running our Construction Trades Program. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You stole part of what I was going to say about Brian, but I just want to say thanks for the recognition to the school board and cabinet and to my-- especially Brian, as I say, you know, he's a former student of the program, you know, was in my class years ago and then came on to work with us. And thank you, Stacy, for putting this together. It's always been my privilege to work with the kids and teach them the skills that I was kind of forced to learn. But it's a privilege and honor to work with these students every day, and I look forward to coming to work and doing it. So just thank you for all the things you do to keep the ball rolling as well.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
I just wanted to say congratulations. It's absolutely fabulous that you're being recognized. We have such a critical need for young people in the trades right now, not only in Michigan, but across this country. And to have a program like this that's helping us direct young people towards a very successful and long-lasting career in a much-needed area is just superb. I can't appreciate you enough, what you're doing, and I'd also like to suggest that you invite the board over to try out that simulator.
You gotta strap into a harness and go up.
Oh, now that sounds good.
You may lose a few of us there.
All right, I'll do that part. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other comments? Mrs. Burton?
Just a question for Mr. Martin. Could you fill us in a little bit more on how the school district and the city are in partnership with one another? The board is somewhat familiar, but the public may not be at all familiar with that.
Yeah, actually, I would like to also thank them as well and the Home Builder Association for the relationships that we have and the Inspection Department with the city of Lavonia. But how the program works is the Housing Department acquires a home through different avenues and funding sources. Usually, it's a tax foreclosure or something of that nature. They take the home, and then they-- if it needs any abatements done to it that are hazardous to the students or whoever, that's all done prior to us getting there. We get full clearance, and then I work with certain people in the Housing Commission, one of them being Glenn Warren, who we go through the house and do the kind of a walk through, a punch list of things that, you know, need to be done, have to be done, things we want to be done, things that should be done for the students to learn certain parts of the curriculum. And so we roll through the house at that nature, and then we start off, and it could be the home could need, you know, could need everything. There's been years that were kind of lean, you know, years ago, where the house just-- some of the homes just need exterior works, where they need roofs, doors and windows trimmed, things like that, and then we would be off with that one and onto the new one. And now, how the program works is we're trying to cycle through, like this year's class started off finishing last year's class's house and so on and so forth, so they can do new and old and not be rushed through an entire house project. So the Housing Department kind of funds the home, funds the materials, and we bring semi-skilled labor and instructor along to get it all put together. And then they sell it and turn it over, and then, you know, all the money's handled through their end, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fabulous partnership with the city.
Other questions or comments? I just recently had a need for a plumber.
Yeah.
And after an hour there and what I paid, I'm in the wrong profession.
Yeah.
These, I mean, you're really filling an area of need. You know, many, many years ago, parents just wanted their children to go to college. Everybody had to go to college. And I think that there's a segment out there that they don't want to do that. They want alternatives, and we provide them with those alternatives.
Right.
So all of the programs we have at the Career Center are just outstanding, and I think with the number of students that are getting into those programs, you can see how it's filling that need.
Yeah, it's amazing to think that-- I say it all the time, you hear people say, you know, I paid for a plumber, electrician, but your home is one of your largest investments ever. You shouldn't be afraid to put money into it or the person that's doing the work, and everyone always shrugs away at it. But if you're paying someone who's skilled and talented, you should be paying them what they're worth, you know? So hopefully, what we're doing too, training those guys, young ladies, to get out there and work, so.
We appreciate it, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that will move us on to Item 3C, District Update from Superintendent. Mrs. Oakwist?
Thank you, President Johnson. I have some accolades to share for a number of our students this evening. We'd like to congratulate three outstanding writers at Emerson Middle School who were honored for their hero essays in the America in Me contest. Kira Hura took first place, Owen Hawley took second, and Eric Hobson Jr. finished third. Kira's essay will now go on for further judging. Congratulations and kudos to them for participating. Stevenson shared the exciting news that we have a senior, John Rosner, that will be honored at a banquet in March for scoring in the top 100 in the Michigan Mathematics Prize Competition this year. We also have two top 100 scorers from Churchill High School who are sophomores. Yashvan Ravan, this is his third consecutive time in the top 100 of the Mathematics Prize Competition. And Pranav--
He's a sophomore?
And he's a sophomore.
Oh, boy.
First is an eighth grader. And Pranav, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Sanjir Rajan, this is his second consecutive top 10 finish. In order to be in the top 100, over 10,000 Michigan high schoolers take the initial exam. From those students, the top 1,000 scorers take a five-question proof exam and then are scored on that. The top 100 then go on to the banquet to be recognized in March. So we wish them all luck. And last year, I believe Yashvan finished 35th in the state out of the initial 10,000. So congratulations to them. We have a number of athletic highlights. As you know, we're winding down with winter season, and we would like to extend congratulations to Coach Chiola at Franklin High School and four varsity wrestlers who will be wrestling as state qualifiers next weekend. On Friday, March 1, at Ford Field, we have Christian Gerbert, Jaeger Kwiatkowski, Eric Reeves, and Jake Swirple, who will all be headed down for their quest for an individual state title. And as you know, we've had a couple of wrestlers from Franklin who we've recognized at this podium over the past number of years. So we wish the four of them good luck this Friday. Go Pats! During the KLAA Conference Championship Meet, Franklin High School student Jessica H. competed in the D1 Division of Gymnastics. She earned first in bars, second in vault, and first all-around. So congratulations to Jessica. That's a wonderful accomplishment. The Stevenson Hockey Team are the KLAA Conference Champions this year. Congratulations to Coach Mitchell and the team. And all three of our high schools head into regional matches this week, so good luck to each of them. The Lavonia High School Figure Skaters are district champs, both B and C divisions, won gold medals, and move on to state championships next month. Finally, congratulations to all of our LPS bowlers. I know you've followed their successes and their excitement throughout the season. Each of our six teams did just truly an outstanding job. We have a number of them who have qualified for individual states. At Franklin, we have four, three, Ian Kane, Ken Cloth, and Aaron Wright, who was a regional champ. At Stevenson, we have Emily Morris. And at Churchill, we have Noah Campbell and Carly Lugos. Congratulations to each of them. And we have two Career Technical Center senior students, Kristiana and Caitlin, who are taking the Advanced Medicine Class at the Lavonia Career Technical Center, and they are leading a really neat evening for students later this week called Let's Learn About Nutrition. They'll be holding this session at the Civic Center Library on February 27 from 4:30 to 5:30, and it's fun lessons about eating on a balanced diet. The session is for children 7 to 12 years old and will touch on the five food groups and the benefits of a balanced diet. So we encourage you to take your elementary student out to learn more and also to support our two awesome students from LCTC who will be sharing this at the Civic Center Library. If you'd like to register, you may go on the library website in the Events section. And finally, I'd like to thank everyone who joined us on Saturday for the special kindergarten registration. We had a number of families come out, and I'd like to thank all of our folks from Central Office and from our schools who came out to register many, many students who are going to be our future class of 2032. Thanks so much, President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist, for making us feel old.
2032.
Alright, as I indicated, we are going to take a short, five- to 10-minute recess
at this point, and we'll be back. Thank you, and welcome back. And we will now proceed with the remainder of our agenda. We'll move us down to Item 3D, Written Communications. Are there any written communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to 3E, Audience Communications. And Audience Communications is the time of the meeting where the board members will listen to audience communications. Anyone who wants to address the board, I have one blue slip tonight, but let me explain what our process is. First of all, please understand that the board has three roles. The first role is that we hire and evaluate the superintendent. Our second role is we implement and prepare policy. And the third role is that we approve our budgets and make sure that they are in line with long-term financial and strategic goals of the school district. So during audience communication, if any of those three items are the subject matter of the communication, then you can expect a response from the board. If your communication relates to the day-to-day operations of the district, which the board does not get involved in, and a response is required or requested, then that response will come from either the superintendent or our administration. We also have a timer. Each speaker is entitled to three minutes, and we've found that through using a timer with an audible sound at three minutes, that it's a little more respectful to the speaker to let them know that they are at the end of their three minutes. And as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, we respect all of the speakers. We also request that the speakers respect our three-minute time limit. So when we get to the three minutes, I will ask you to wrap it up, and I would expect that you do so and not continue on if you have more at that time. So we will proceed now with Audience Communications. As I indicated, I have one blue slip, and it is from Bridget Casey.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, it's my first time.
Oh, great.
Otherwise, you would recognize me.
Welcome.
Today, I wrote everything down, so I'm gonna read it. Today, I'm representing the parents from Nijiro Japanese Dual Immersion Elementary. I've come to voice a couple of the concerns we've been having. First, I'd like to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you, and I'd like to say that we are very proud to be a part of the Lavonia Public School family. Our first concern is with knowing the teachers' contracts are now in negotiations, we as parents are worried there will be-- there will continue to be a high turnover rate for our teachers' employment. Beginning of the year, we had lost three teachers and more the prior year. We would like to voice our concerns for fair wages that equal the salary of the other teachers in the district, which is $33,200 compared to the $39,005 for the rest of the district, with an even bigger gap when it comes to-- of almost $10,000 when it comes to the master degree certification. And we-- sorry. And know what you, as district leaders, are doing to attract new teachers. what, sorry, and know what you, as district leaders, are doing to attract new teachers, and also retain the teachers that we love at our school. Our kindergarten teacher recently had to go home to Japan for a family emergency, and now 50 students between both kindergarten classes, because we have one teacher that shares both classes, some of which don't know any English besides what they've already been taught for this year. Basically, for a few days, we're left without anyone to translate for them and to help them through the day. This can happen at any time with any of the teachers, whether they're American teachers or the Japanese teachers. Our biggest concern would be with the Japanese teachers, just because we know it's so hard to find them. What is being set in place to prevent periods, gap periods, if something were to happen with the teachers having to leave? Just because since it is a dual immersion, again, we have students that do not understand one language or the other language. And what is being done to help get our Japanese teachers certified, which has become more of a requirement from the district, and we completely understand? And with them getting their certification, it will help keep them in Nijiro, which is very important to us. Has, and we were also wondering, who has been set in place, or has anyone been set in place, to maybe delegate a search through universities in the United States that offer Japanese and teaching programs, that we would be able to contact, to come to the school to possibly teach, welcome them to the district, and welcome them to Nijiro directly?
Thank you, Ms. Casey. That's your, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Alright, that was the only blue slip that I had, so we will move on to item 3F, response to prior audience communication. Is there any response? I don't believe that there is. Therefore, we'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. And may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the special meeting of February 4, 2019. 5B, minutes of the regular meeting of February 4, 2019. 5C, minutes of the closed session of February 4, 2019.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That will take us to item six, our instructional matters. We have one item under that tonight. Item A, approval to purchase computers for Livonia Career Technical Center. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of 26 Hewlett-Packard computers and display monitors, including Care Pack Services, from CDW for the LCTC Engineering Design Class, totaling $88,584.60.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mr. Willemburg, will you be helpful with that?
Yes, yes. Thank you, President Johnson. As I've explained previously, Mr. Anderson and his crew at the Career Center annually review their, their equipment, and they want to make sure that all their computers, everything is up to college-level standards and industry standards. And this year, they've focused on their engineering design class and are asking, requesting to purchase these computers that you had a chance to, to view during the Committee of Hold Meeting a couple weeks ago. It's a, it's a fund, it's a, money's from the 61A Fund, which means it's not coming out of the Livonia Public Schools' general budget. It's money directed and put aside from the state to support Career Center programs. I strongly recommend your support, ongoing support for this purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Willemburg. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
These machines are several thousand dollars apiece, but the reason they're so expensive is because they are very heavy-duty equipment meant to run pretty heavy-duty software, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Any other questions or comments? Alright, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval to purchase computers for Livonia Career Technical Center. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item seven, business matters, and we have two matters under business matters this evening. Item A is approval to purchase buses. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of 12 buses through the Michigan School Business Office, Business Officials' Bus Purchasing Program, in the amount of $836,981 in contingency funds, and the amount of $10,000 for a total cost of up to $846,981.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and I believe Mrs. Smith, who is here tonight, will help us with this. Good evening.
Thank you, President Johnson. As we discussed at our last committee meeting, the district has a fleet of 110 school buses. We are very grateful for the support from our community for the 2013 bond. We were able to replace 66 of those buses over the course of the bond. Last year, the board approved, and we purchased nine new buses, which leaves 35 buses on our fleet that are over 10 years old. So the recommendation for the board tonight is the approval to purchase 12 new buses. We applied for and received a grant that is going to pay for 25% of the cost of five of these buses, so that funding is just over $70,000, with the remainder of the cost coming from the general fund. We have a few different options as far as purchases for buses. One option is not the sinking fund. Sinking funds are not allowed to be used for school bus purchases. We can, however, use bond funds, and again, we were able to use our 2013 bond to replace 66, but that leaves the general fund as a source for these much-needed purchases. So one question that had come up during the committee meeting was, what is the average lifespan of the buses? Of the mini-buses, the average span is eight to 10 years. For a full-size, it goes from 10 all the way up to 14 years. And these are based on a few studies that were done in warmer climates. There weren't any studies done, you know, here in Michigan, so that's the best data that we have. So just to mention that, those take place in warmer climates where they don't see the extreme temperatures we see here in Michigan, as well as the salt usage on the roads that are, you know, rough for the metal and, you know, cause rusting. So it is my recommendation that we move forward with the purchase of these 12 buses. I did want to mention one thing. We typically don't see a contingency set aside for this type of purchase, but during the month of February, the Michigan School Business Officials closes the bus purchasing program so that they can solicit new bids, and that would be for the most current model of buses available. So the bus quotes that we have for tonight is the 2019 model, and so we're hopeful of March 1st that we'll have updated pricing for potentially 2020/20 model buses. So this contingency will allow us to move forward with the purchase without having to come back to the board, but also, you know, staying in line with what we've discussed. I think I've covered that. I don't know if there's any questions. I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions from the board? I want to make sure. You said we have 35 buses that are older than 10 years.
That's correct.
So these 12 would reduce that down to?
23. That's correct.
And I'm assuming we're taking the oldest buses out of the fleet to buy the new ones?
That's correct, with the exception, there's one replacement of a, the engine year is 2008 wheelchair-accessible full-size bus. We have some older full-size buses that are one year older than that, but it's a recommendation from our garage supervisor that that's the only one of its type. The rest of them, the next oldest is a 2014, so it was his recommendation that we replace that wheelchair bus. So we're including that in this purchase recommendation.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval to purchase buses. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item 7B, approval to purchase flexible furniture for Buchanan Elementary School, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of flexible furniture for Buchanan Elementary School from Interior Environments for a total of $36,113.28.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Scott, you're gonna help us with this. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, President Johnson. As was discussed in a past study session and at the February 11th Committee of the Whole, Buchanan has worked with Interior Environments to design areas in Buchanan that will provide some alternate options for students working and learning together. The funds, again, are being used from the 2013 bond allocated specifically for flexible furniture for the students. Areas impacted by Buchanan's design will include the lobby, one part of the library where they use for buddies and some special meeting places for students, and the East Commons Open Area for those of you who are familiar with Buchanan's layout. Again, this purchase utilizes the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Discount Program, and as always, we want to always remind our community that we're thankful for the, them supporting the bond in 2013, which is impacting all of our schools, students, and staff. It's recommended that the board approve the flexible furniture purchase for Buchanan Elementary.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
And again, with the, Mrs. Scott, with the mention of the bond funds, these are funds that are specifically utilized, need to be utilized for those types of purchases as opposed to salaries or textbooks or so forth.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval to purchase flexible furniture for Buchanan Elementary School, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. The motion carries. Thank you. That'll move us to item eight, and we have a number of items under this heading tonight, Personnel Matters. Our first is item A, teacher for approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2018-2019 school year to the teacher listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Archibald, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. This individual was interviewed along with other qualified applicants for a vacancy that existed in our instructional program. We believe that the teacher listed is the most qualified for the position indicated, and we recommend that this individual be approved for employment. This position is in the 2018-2019 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, for the approval of teacher. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item 8B, leave of absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for leave of absence as listed below. Christine Broome, March 8, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you again. This request for a leave is in accordance with the LEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. As such, we are requesting that the leave be approved as requested for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. I'm sorry, 2018-2019.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, for leave of, approval of leave of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item 8C, retirements, a resolution of appreciation for employees who are retiring. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions for appreciation for the services rendered by Lyndon Lewis, Rita Seymour, Shari Shaw.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Up again, Mr. Archibald?
Up again. These individuals will be retiring with over 70 years of experience with Livonia Public Schools. On behalf of the district, I'd like to thank each of them for their years of dedicated service to our students and to the school community, and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation in their honor.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
It's, it's interesting when we get these on a monthly basis, the number of years of service of these individuals. It's, it's hard to, to lose that, that institutional knowledge, but we understand that they've put in a lot of years, and they're entitled to sort of ride off into the sunset. So we appreciate all of their years of service. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries, and again, thank you for all your years of service. That'll take us to item 8D, separation agreement. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the separation agreement between the Livonia Public Schools School District, Livonia Education Association, LEA, and Kimberly Cone.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Johnson. You'll recall, we reviewed the terms and conditions of this agreement as a legal opinion in closed session on February 4th. The agreement has since been executed by all parties, by the terms and conditions as was recommended by our attorney, and we're asking for the board's approval today.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, to accept the separation agreement. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Sen, um, sorry, Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Crystal snap being here's got me all in a funk. Got my rhythm off. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for your hard work, Mrs. Bonnefield. Alright, that will take us to item nine, hearing from board members, and we have five items under this tonight. And item A is second reading of board policy, DFKA, crowdsourced fundraising. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy DFKA, crowdsourced fundraising. document for board policy DFKA, crowd-sourced funding.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, and I believe Mrs. Smith is going to help us with this tonight.
Thank you, President Johnson. This is a new board policy that was adopted by the budget this past fall, and we're very grateful. We've shared this with our stakeholders and got some important feedback from them, and so we're making a few minor tweaks to help clarify the intent of the board policy, but keeping everything else the same.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Burton?
Just along the lines of your comments, Mrs. Smith, thank you to our, members of our local PTSAs, boosters who brought a couple of their concerns to our attention. We really do listen to the folks within our school community, and we're happy to make the changes that are necessary.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, on our second reading and adoption of board policy DFKA, crowd-sourced funding. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item 9B, which is our first reading of board policy, JGFC, arrival dismissal and recess guidelines. And Mrs. Scott is going to help us with that tonight.
Thank you, President Johnson. Board policy JGFC has been discussed at a study session and a Committee of the Whole. We are recommending some changes. The title of dismissal precautions, we're recommending to be replaced with arrival dismissal and recess guidelines for ease of referencing the information during a search. The first two paragraphs remain about the same as we had discussed in the past with the changes in red, so that the first two paragraphs read, "Students are expected to follow their daily school schedule from time of arrival until dismissed unless curriculum requires otherwise. Students are to remain on school grounds during their lunch period. Students may be excused from school during the school day with parent or guardian permission and will follow the procedures established by the building administration." The third paragraph was reworked, hoping to capture some of the suggestions voiced during our last discussion. That paragraph was broken into two paragraphs and reads as, "Permission to take a student from school property shall be granted to either parent or guardian. If one parent has been awarded custody of the student by the courts, the parent of custody shall provide the school with a copy of the custody order and inform the school in writing of any limitations in the rights of the non-custodial parent. Absent such notice, the school will presume, that the student may be released into the care of either parent. Release is also permitted to any other adult designated by the courts as the legal guardian or any adult who has been designated as an emergency contact on a student's signed information card. Photo ID is required. Any exception shall require the written permission of an authorized parent or legal guardian." Are there any clarifying questions? Hopefully, we were able to capture some of the concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. And just so the community is aware, this is a first reading of the policy. By procedure, we have to have a first reading, and then it will be brought before the Board at our next regular or voting meeting to be voted on, and in between, there may be some tweaks that we may deem necessary. So, Mrs. Bradford?
Yeah, I just have a question. In the first paragraph, when you were reading it, "Students are expected to follow their daily school schedule from the time of arrival until dismissal unless curriculum requires otherwise," or until dismissed. Would it be better to put in until dismissal, or no, until dismissed? Is that just a picky, I'm being picky, or does that make sense, or no?
They might be dismissed at a time that's not the dismissal time.
Oh, good point. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis.
That's, I think that's what we were thinking.
Okay.
The difference between dismissal time.
Okay.
It'd be kind of like the end of the day, but they could be dismissed at other times.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Other questions or comments on this particular policy? Mrs. Burton?
Just a quick thank you to our Cabinet staff. In this day and age, not every family falls into the same units that another family might, and this took a good deal of reworking, I'm sure, in order to make sure that we captured the essence of our procedures, and we're still respectful of all families involved. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you for your suggestions, and want to thank Cabinet members who helped with this, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then we will put that on for a second reading and a vote at our next voting meeting.
March 25th.
May, March 25th, right. Same day, different month. All right, that will move us item, to item 9C, first reading of board policy, BHA, which is the Code of Ethics, and this is something that the Board reviews on an annual basis, usually at the beginning of the year. We were just a tad late this year. This is our living, breathing document that guides us in our roles as Board members, and we do look at it each year because at times, things do change, and we have different perspectives from year to year. And we have gone through that at our last Committee of the Whole meeting, and there were only, I believe, two, actually four, different areas. The first one is the, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth bullet point down, which reads, "I will review and evaluate all policies, bylaws, procedures, and processes of the Board, and will work to make desired changes so they will be current, relevant, and in accordance with state and federal laws." Everybody good with that change? Then, on the second page, the seventh bullet point down reads, "I will take no private or public action that will compromise the Board, the Administration, or the District."
Mr. Johnson, you also missed one.
I missed one, yes. Let's, we'll deal with this one now. Is everybody in agreement with that? And I will go back up to the fourth item. I'm a little colorblind, so I didn't see the red. "I will exercise caution when communicating between and among Board members, including electronic communications, and will abide by the Open Meetings Act." We just changed via to including. And are we all good with that? And the last change is the third bullet point up from the bottom of that section that says, "I will support the hiring of those persons best qualified to serve as district staff," and we just changed employment to hiring. Are we all good with that? All right, are there any other changes or modifications at this time, Mrs. Bonnefield?
So, going back and reading, it's, "I will take no private or public action." And we hashed this out. Is there any way, would people be, "I will take no action" and just take public and private out? Is it, private meant a little bit, I think, different when we originally wrote it, and then we decided we needed to add public, and so that covers pretty much everything. "I will take no action."
I would support that change.
Any other thoughts? Mrs. Burton?
I actually like leaving it in just for clarity, so that we're, so that the intent is very clear, that we're not only talking about when we are sitting at the board table, but also when we are in our homes, out in the public, at a school, or a private function, wherever we are, we will abide by this. So for that reason, I like the language that we're proposing right now.
Okay.
Mrs. Jarvis, you good with that? Yeah, you're shaking your head, yes?
She nods her head.
Is she? I didn't know whether you were going to sleep or... Okay, any other? Mrs. Bradford?
I concur with Mrs. Burton, I think, to leave it in, so that we understand what kind of action, or it just kind of clarifies things a little more.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Any other comments, Mrs. Jarvis?
On the first page, there was one item where we had added the phrase, "and in accordance with state and federal laws." There may be some items we consider where state and federal laws differ. Is that something that we should take into consideration?
Perhaps. The wording would be "and in accordance with state and/or federal laws," and then you're not lumping them all together?
Right.
How's that sound?
It was just a little more flexibility.
Mr. Centers, you had a thought?
I was just pointing out that one supersedes the other, so. But I think and/or.
And/or would do the trick. Everybody good with that? Okay, and of course, this is a first reading, so we do have the opportunity to continue to review it as we always do, and if we want to propose any additional changes, let's do that before we reconvene next month on a voting meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds good? All right. All right. That will then take us to item 9D, selection of candidate for MASB Board of Directors. And we've done this in the past, where we have to recommend and vote on a selection for the candidate that we, as a Board, choose as the Region 8 candidate, and we forward on to MASB. And through our processes, we do have to make that selection in an open meeting. And I know that we discussed the individuals at the Committee of the Whole. We had biographical information on them. They wrote election statements, and we've had an opportunity to review those. So what I'm going to do is I will ask each Board member who their vote would be for, and if we have a plurality of a particular candidate, then we will put that person's name into our motion, and then we will make the motion at that time. Everybody good with that? Okay, I'll start to my right, Mrs. Bradford.
Okay. All the candidates, I thought, were really great, and put together some great, um, I guess what I would say, they're, they're, put together all their information. I liked them all. I think I would go, my vote was for Darlene Pomponio, South Gate Community Schools. It seemed like she had a lot of experience. She has worked as an executive board for the Wayne County Association for School Boards. I thought her election statement looked really good, and I would go vote for her.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Burton?
My suggestion, I do agree with Mrs. Bradford, that every one of the candidates who has put their name forward is, is very qualified and would bring strengths to the MASB Board of Directors. When forced to come down to one, I believe my suggestion would be Joshua Denzler. He seems to understand, while he is very young in terms of school boards, he has two years of experience, but he seems to understand the function of the MASB, what that role would be, and I do think that there's value to having some of our younger folks step forward into these leadership positions when they are qualified to do so, and I believe Joshua is one of those qualified individuals. So he would be my first choice, I believe. And again, I would thank all the candidates for putting their names forward, because every one of them is qualified and has merits.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Bonnefield?
My vote would be for Mrs. McQuiston.
Okay, Mr. Centers?
I'm gonna go and echo Mrs. McQuiston.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Again, I think that this is a slate of wonderful candidates that are all highly qualified. However, my vote would be for Joshua Denzler. I agree with Mrs. Burton that it is a good thing to have perspective and diversity on a board, and to have the voice of someone who is a little younger with fresher eyes would be a good thing.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That leaves me. I agree. I looked at every one of these candidates very closely, and they all have very unique outlooks and talents that I think any one of them could do a very good job as the delegate. I truthfully believe that maybe we need a little youth. Maybe it's just me, I'm getting old. But I like to see the young folks getting in there, taking an active role, and he seems to certainly have at least a lot of energy, so my vote would be for Mr. Denzler as well. And looking at my list, that is three, three votes for Denzler, two for McQuiston, and one for Pomponio. Everybody agree with that? So Mr. Denzler will be our selected candidate. We need to put him into the motion. And Mrs. Bur, uh, may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District designate Joshua Denzler as the Region 8 candidate for the MASB Board of Directors, and designate the Executive Assistant of the Board of Education to cast the vote accordingly.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton. Are there questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton, to approve Mr. Denzler as our candidate for MASB Board of Directors. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. And I want to thank my colleagues for all of their input. We, I know we all took a good look at these candidates, and it's greatly appreciated. That will take us to item 9E, hearing from Board members, and has, as it has become our MO and the way we do things, I will open it up to the floor to make any comments at this point. Anybody have any comments? Anything they want to say tonight? It's a quiet evening.
It's a quiet evening tonight.
All right. Since we don't have any comments, I just want to say, congratulations to all of our principals. The...
I forgot what we need to talk about. We didn't talk, you finish up what you're saying.
Okay. Just wanted to thank all the principals for their, their hard work that they, that they give us every day, and their leadership, and to Mr. Martin for his wonderful leadership in, in that particular program. It is second to none, and we are so proud to have not only the program, but Mr. Martin at the helm, so thank you. And Mrs. Bonnefield?
We didn't talk about the, the award from the other night, and from the...
Well, you have the floor.
Chamber of Commerce.
Oh.
So, am I, is it okay if I talk about it?
Of course.
Yeah, we were gonna put enough on the thing. So, we went to the chamber dinner the other night, where they gave out lots of really great awards for the community, and we, ours was for community enhancement for the, for the school districts and all the work that we've done on the bond. So again, as we express our appreciation often for the bond that was passed by our community, we'll thank them again, because we won a really outstanding, it was a really nice evening, we won the award, one of the three awards for community enhancement, and there were a lot of deserving recipients from the evening, so I don't know if they must, the Chamber must have it listed on their, their website perhaps. And then I'd also like to say, congratulations to Marty Talty on winning Citizen of the Year. He was one of the very, very, very key players in putting the Universal Placegate together at Rotary Park. He's a fellow Rotarian, and it is so well-deserved an award for him as well. So, all around, it was a really fantastic evening. All of our teachers were there. We had all of our Teachers of the Year, which we've presented here at our Board meetings. They were all recognized, and everybody got lots of declarations and trophies and stuff, and so it was a really great evening. It was very exciting for everyone.
Very nice.
Thank you for reminding us.
Yes.
It's hard to lose the enhancement when you spend $195 million. All right, do we have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there anything else to be... Seeing none, is there anything else to be brought before the Board tonight?
I don't think so.
If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.